It is that time, and I'd call this meeting of the County Council order. Would you please stand for our invitation? Remain standing for our biggest allegiance. And I will ask you ahead of time to that if you would leave that.
Yes, sir.
And we will salute the flag standing right here to my right. Doug Haddick is a former county commissioner, two-term county commissioner from District 3, and has been on the board at his church for many, many, many years, many terms, and representing Wausau seemingly. Would Haddick, you would leave us in our invitation?
I will. I want to say just a word or two.
Yes.
I was just thinking today, I live just about three miles outside of Sidney, limit to Wausau. But Wausau is home to our family.
Yes.
We've worked, we've played, and we worship here in Wausau for over 70 years. So, we feel a big part of Wausau.
Absolutely.
And my boys, is Dolan Carter, their, Dolan is my boy's hero.
Yes.
He took time up with them when they were just little kids. Fun days, they'd go out back then, we could, they could get a go for him on race. Those days was old. But, they talk about Dolan now, how he took time up with them playing football out here around the ball field, and fun day with them. So, we would need to always take a deal bit of time for other children. One day, what we can do for them and encourage, support, whatever little projects they have, mean a lot to them, they'll never forget it.
Yes.
When they get grown up. Let us pray. Father, we thank you, Lord, for this opportunity, Lord, without to come, Lord, and have a prayer, Lord, of camp of hearing over the business of the town. We thank you for the people that's elected to do the business, Lord, of Wausau. Father, we know that they have a great responsibility, but they're all able and qualified to do your work. And Father, we just thank you, Lord, that usually small towns has the most disagreements amongst them. But this little town of Wausau has never been that way. They stayed out of the paper with negative stuff. And Father, we ask you to continue to give them wisdom to do those things that's right before you. And all these things, we ask in your name. Amen.
Amen. Will you join with me in pledging allegiance to the most wonderful country in the world? Please, attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, and liberating justice for all.
And I failed to mention, Brother Haddick was also a victim. Thank you for coming. You can leave.
Okay. Now I got a little off again.
Okay. Thank you, thank you for coming. All right. Welcome everyone to our council meeting tonight, and you have your, you have your package before you. Everyone had an opportunity to review it minutes, the attend itself. Is there any additions, corrections, or additions to be made? The chairman entertained a motion to accept the, down through the clerk, everything on the consent agenda, Minister West Management's thought. Okay. The chairman, except for motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion that we approve it.
But a motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion, a second in discussion on the motion. How do you vote for it?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Walker? The chair votes yes. Is everybody have your mics turned on with place where you can be present? Okay. Waste management. Mr. Davis, come on. Mr. Dooley?
Yeah. About as quick.
Yeah.
And I don't, you want me to stand here? Is that what you mean?
That would be fine. Pull your shirt and say it.
I'm going to leave.
What's your coffee? What's your coffee?
So, my name's Doug Rayner. I am five and a half months in working with waste management. And I took Ronnie Bell's place, who maybe many of you have met. He was the representative for our company back to the local governments that we serve for about seven years, but had, it seemed like a lot longer. He was a good guy, and when he got ready to retire, he called me and asked me if I liked to come in and possibly take his place. So, long story short, I've been in local government, city government for 14 years, and now with waste management in this role for five and a half years. The reason why I'm here is your contract with us expires, a five-year contract. It expires January, December 31st of this year. And we, looking over the terms, you know, we were required to either let you know we want to continue that relationship or not, or negotiate something different, and the town has the same opportunity. We decided that we would like to continue that relationship and presented a letter a couple of months ago to the mayor with some terms in it that we thought were fair. That letter said that we wanted to give a price increase of 3.8% and remove the cap that you have on your annual CPI, your consumer price index increase is what you get every year. 3.8% is not arbitrary. That number is what was projected at the time for the end of the year for the CPI to be, they projected throughout the year. It's actually higher than that, what they projected right now, but we're comfortable leaving it at that. So, that was the big, that's really all we asked for, and to renew the term for five years with that increase. Essentially, it would just be a, we'd roll into the next year with your annual increase. But we went ahead and set that rate. And that's where we stand, is a five-year term that would end in 27, December 31st. We have appreciated the opportunity to do business with you this long, and we would like to continue for it.
Morgan, I met, it's probably been a couple of months ago now, we discussed this at our last meeting, and Mr. Carter's had a chance to look at the contract. Okay. Just one more clarification, that we, you said again there, and it's exactly what you said before, with the removal of the cap, then we were aiming to go be CPI, if it's 3, 4, 5%, that's what it'll be.
That's correct.
If it's nothing, then we don't get an increase that year.
That's right. If it's negative, we give you some money back. That's correct.
That's.
The, and then, there's one addition, and what you asked for was to add an additional cleanup day.
That's right.
A fourth day, and we did that, and we put it into the amendment for the contract as well.
Next year, instead of having three weeks, three periods of time, we're going to have four, we'll have one, about once a quarter, so the people that can have heavier stuff than what they're putting in their can, and still household, can rent here, and then they will call it off. That's no expense to us.
That's correct.
That's awesome. Does anyone have a question for Mr. Rayner? And do we all remember the conversation we had, we shared the contract with everyone before? Okay. Pardon us the pleasure of the council. He's talking about replacing Ronnie Bell, the legend. You would have to know Ronnie Bell. And we know Ronnie Bell. Any, any questions? The chairman entertained a motion on the contract?
I'll make a motion to do the contract.
To approve the renewal? And this is a five-year term?
Yes, sir.
A renewal for a five-year term. Okay. Have a motion, any discussion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion on the motion? How you doing, Ms. West?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
The chair votes yes. Okay. We have the, we have the live contractor, you do?
I do.
You will need us to execute it?
I do. If you could do that for me today, that would be great. That way, I can take it back to my, our people. I have two copies, one right there, one and two. And the rate sheet is attached to that, the same one that you had, that we gave you, that included that increase.
Just as long as your tipping man that's running your loader doesn't keep breaking the wheels off her. So, if he breaks a wheel, call someone, fix it. But you're, okay. He's pretty rough.
I really thought he was going to rent an old coffee cup tonight or something.
They haven't given me anything to give away yet. I'm still that eager.
Somebody would probably consider that a wrap.
They don't need a coffee. We're out on the mugs and we're hanging.
And since we're still sitting here, I'll tell you this, our, the renewals we've been doing in the Panhandle, which is my area, which I inherited, these renewals, they're running anywhere from 10 to 15 to 20%. So, our people, we appreciate what they did for our, this community and other small communities like it. They're trying to keep it that way.
Do you see Ronnie often, or is he about faded away?
No, I call him once a week, and I take him to breakfast every other day.
All right.
Because he has a lot of knowledge in his brain. There's a lot of things up there that aren't on paper that I need to know, so I still ask him questions.
In my, in my career, in my years of putting service on the table, was one of those real highlights of who became not only career professional, but became personal friends over years.
Yeah, he speaks very highly of U.A.'s community.
Thank you.
I'm proud to be able to take his place. Some people have called me Little Ronnie, and I thought that was strange, and then I said, well, that's actually a compliment.
It is indeed.
Thank you, Paul.
Yes, sir. All right. Okay, I did not, I did not stop at the undergauge of dominance, but I've seen somebody sign it. You're just visiting with us, or did you have a?
We live here, and we're just busy, but we didn't want to say.
I know you live here, but I didn't know if you wanted to see us for something we had done for you.
Y'all are doing a great job.
Or something we did do too. Okay, that ranks stamps for her. Madam Clark?
As you know, we only have one company submit for our administration for our CDBG projects, which was Red Fox Enterprises. What we need today, tonight, is to vote to hire Red Fox Enterprises as the administration for our projects M-109 and M-106, MO-106 and MO-109. Contingent upon DEO giving us their blessing.
Can we do two grants in the single motion since it's, it's the same?
Yes, it's same, yeah.
Okay. Pardon us the pleasure of the board. Remember, we opened those big packages last weekend, we had two, yeah, we had two from Red Fox for two different grants, and two from U.B.R. for two different grants. So, we're, we need to, we need to engage those people's services contingent upon DEO's meeting.
I'll make a motion, will we go with it?
We have a motion for administration for Red Fox. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second in discussion on the motion. Mr. Park?
Yes.
Ms. West?
Yes.
And the chairman votes yes.
Same thing on engineering. D.B.R. Engineering was the only company that submitted a proposal for engineering for the MO-106 and the MO-109 grants. Same motion we need for engineering contingent upon DEO approval. We've got to send them some paperwork and some stuff, is what they're asking for.
The chairman entertained a motion?
I'll make a motion, will we go with it?
We have a motion to select D.B.R. Engineers as our engineering firm for the CDBG grants of MO-106 and MO-109. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second in discussion on the motion. Have it, Mr. West? I'm sorry, Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Park?
Yes.
And the chairman votes yes.
Okay. Now we're down to the nitty-gritty.
Now we're down to the, now we're down to the deals too.
Y'all interviewed two, yes, sir. Y'all interviewed two applicants for the utility building part position. We need to hire a really clerk and set a starting date to give these, whichever one you choose, a couple of weeks to get their notice and stuff like that. And with the holiday coming up, I don't know if y'all want to start there before Labor Day or after Labor Day. We start our payroll week on a Friday, so even though they don't work that day, their first day of work could be in Friday.
Would, would that give them, that should give them time to get their physicals and things like that? So, that would be like the seventh or eighth?
Labor Day's on the 15th, so I think the starting date would be, yeah, be a starting date on that.
The 9th, okay. Okay, can we do one motion or two?
You can do it both.
A body and then set the thing, or just hire them and set it at the same time? Same, do it that way? Okay. Is there a motion that, we interviewed two people last week, Mrs. Walker and Mrs. Brock, and we need to select one of those applicants and set the starting date. We don't have to do anything Saturday night because that was part of the advertising, and this already, this already established. Pardon us the pleasure of the council?
Yes, sir.
What do you need from what the?
I might need to hire one.
Which one of those ladies that we interviewed?
Okay, I'll make a motion to, or?
Which one?
You want to call them?
We have to, we have to wait for the record. We have a motion to hire Mrs. Brock and set September the 9th for a starting date?
That's current.
Okay. Okay. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. How you vote for it?
Yes.
Mr. Park?
Yes.
Ms. West?
Yes.
The chair votes yes.
Okay. At the workshop, we asked for an update on the Posen Palace. In your packets is a email from Shelton Stone. What's on the exterior is remove and replace all existing metal siding from the existing metal building. Remove and replace existing water system and e-trim to match new metal siding. Instill, install new overhead doors and require structural framing for them and trim. Install new rear exit doors and added hardware. Install new exterior lighting. Install new exit signs in emergency. The electrical is all new electrical feeling, fixing fixtures and, and the big fans. We're going to have at least three of the big fans in the.
What's this one section?
Right behind the west main, right behind the bank stand, it's going to the back. Go through the path there, go through the path there, and then come back the other way. Take, take the, just a couple of pages. Right there. And new interior demolition, a Zixon restroom, restrooms and stage rooms. And this'll be, this'll be one big open area back there for full kitchen, meeting rooms, you know, et cetera, and new air condition throughout the house. With the ability to roll those doors up during fun day and the big fans to provide circulation. It was very hot down there this year, but that could not be helped this year.
Okay. I was probably looking not distant when you were saying this, so you're saying on the north end of the Posen Palace where the stage is, the big room over here, big room over here?
And the restrooms.
And the restroom. Is the stage going to be eliminated?
It's going to be a new portable stage. It'll be able to move in, it'll be stored down in the new part that's in the south side now.
Okay.
Stored there and moved out as needed.
Okay. All right. So then we're going to be from coast to coast, one big room?
One big room with a full kitchen, meeting rooms, air, you know, where we can have the reunions down there, we can have the meetings down there.
Will either, will either set of the bathrooms be left?
No. They're all in the front now. We have, if you haven't, and we haven't been in, of course, we haven't accepted it yet. But all the restrooms will be in the front of the building that we have planned. Our south end of the building, which is that?
I see that, I see that big room being, being open all the way across and appliances and things like that being a great place for reunions and things like this, and this become, this become a city hall.
That's right.
Okay. I think the drawback would be right now that if we had somebody who wanted a reunion in December or January, they had to run across from here to there to get to the bathroom. I can see.
Those restrooms, they will be in there till this project is finished.
The bathrooms will be the last thing?
Last thing to go, yeah.
So, we've got the rolled-down doors, and somebody's down there in January and had to run across the floor. There's one of them.
Yeah.
Okay. Are these new bathrooms heated and cooled?
I think they are, but I am not sure of it. I cannot tell you that.
They probably need to.
Yeah. If you went down there Saturday, what they were. Yeah.
Yeah, they were heated on front, they were. It would have been heated on front. Yeah. So, so what did you just tell us? This is what still needs to be done?
This is what still needs to be done, and it's.
And this is part of a second grant, or is this?
It's part of the second grant that, as soon as we finish closeout, and we're very near closeout, in fact, our engineers, if you're in town tomorrow, will be down there tomorrow, and somebody will probably pay good money to see Cliff now or whoever. He's going to do it, one of his guys are going to do the plumbing down there for the septic. We've had it pumped out this week. Cliff?
Cliff?
Take a picture?
Take a picture. So, actually, this is phase two.
Phase two.
Phase two, grant two. This is, this is, this is what we started talking about two or three years ago that we thought was going to get.
In one grant.
And with this one.
Well, and with everything going up, we just did not.
Yes.
It wasn't there.
Okay.
And that's just for yours information. On the backup update, the backup is here, is working, we've worked it. We've made our first payment on it, so we're good to go there.
Wait, wait, you're headed?
Oh, we're, oh, we're still in Posen Palace?
I still am. The rolled-down doors, we have, and these other things, and this is probably stuff that can go back past me, but will there not be dressing rooms now?
They're going to be, and they're, yeah, no, they're going to be, when you go and look at it down there, we have dressing rooms in those restrooms there, and we have storage in there. There's a big storage area. Those are big, you know, it's, it's there. That is already there.
Okay. And I didn't see the rolled-out signs, did you? So, the side, doors?
Oh, they should be in there.
Did you s?
They're in there.
I see new exit doors.
Install new element of overhead doors and required a structural framing and e-trim. That's the overhead garage doors that we rolled out.
And they'll roll, they'll roll out, I think, that's. Anybody have a question about our next phase? And that rent cycle begins and?
We hopefully in September, if we can get this enclosed out, we'll be applying.
Okay.
And we may be close to, close out to apply.
They're always working on the application, I'm sure.
Yeah, they already got the application ready.
All right.
Because we had it in the first phase.
Okay, I was approached on fun day that one of the candidates had committed to help us with that.
Okay, we do.
And, and I said to the person that approached me, that the candidates all would say that they'll help us someday. We just need to make sure that we touch base with anybody that we need to, and if anyone wants to help us from the club or whatever, phone calls, letters or whatever. Okay? All right? Please go ahead.
Okay. I missed one there. But we're back to it. The backup is here, is purchased, and we've made our first payment on it, so we're good to go on the, leave backups. We need to set a budget workshop. So, um.
How does our budget do? Is our, is our revenues coming in?
Our state revenues are up a little bit. We've, I love, so far, up a little bit. We're, we have a lot we need to discuss that I want to go over with y'all. But, you know, we need, and we, you know, we can meet on the regular meeting night, you know, an hour at 4:00 before that, you know, we're going to go to a public here, we probably need a different amount, because we need, we need to, you know, we've got to do an ordinance, so we might have to have a special meeting to adopt this by September 30th. But the state funds are slow coming in, you know, we usually done had budget workshops by now, but state funds are slow, and then the revenue conferences just got over, so we just got all the funds. In fact, they were, someone warned me about yesterday.
Once we do the workshop, once we do the workshop, then we have to have two hearings on the?
We have to have two public hearings and a, we need an ordinance class. So, we'll do one of those public hearings.
And we can only do them so many days apart?
10 days apart.
10 days apart, so the people should.
I try.
Yeah. Okay.
It's not a big deal.
How much do you like, how much, how long before you would have the budget that you would present us to consider?
I am through with the water. And the smaller funds, I'm working out there. Should be, I, I probably not, say, through with it.
Okay.
Just got a few questions I need to go with you sometime we're running about.
Okay. That's where, that's where I was headed. I'm leaving Monday for about 10 days to Blue Ridge, Georgia. We'll be back on Labor Day. Are we coming? Yeah.
First or second sometime?
We'll be back, yeah. We'll be back on the, yeah, we'll be back the week of Labor Day.
Yeah, if you'll be back then, we can do it, we can meet that week, and we might can do a workshop the second week in September there. When are you in town? Go through your calendar, Max, and when are y'all in town?
Yeah.
I can meet with you sometime Labor Day.
The second week of September, we're not in, we've been.
We're not in, and I have to come up if we do that.
We're to come up from down there, but we've been.
Yeah, if we get, if we get a time crunch, I could drive it.
Okay. Let me look at the calendars, and I'll send out, and see when we can set it, what time. I know we can set it at 4:00, no problem, rock, get it.
And because we're not, because we're, we're not giving anybody here being with me because...
We always go with the budget before I presume. With the mayor, with the mayor.
I know that.
Everybody, everybody.
I wanted everybody to know that we're not, we're not finigling or.
No, you can come ask them. We can't come sit here.
It will help me to speak to it when.
That second week of September, we may be in town on the 8th, because you have it up with my Dr. Taylor on my calendar. 8th. So, you may be here that day.
If we can meet that first week, and maybe meet that day. Everybody needs to tell your calendar, this is not about me.
Yeah. Send me, y'all send me dates that y'all are available, the second week and around the 8th for a workshop?
Just following me, is just as long as, not 4:00, if it's 4:00, or you can count after 4:00.
4:00.
8th to 4th, you, the workshop?
Does that give us time to do workshop and two hearings?
Yeah, we might be work. We'll set a, we usually have a special meeting like on September 30th, you know, just to adopt that budget and have a second public hearing.
Okay. If we did that on the 8th, and the 12, 13, somewhere in there, we could have a meeting, and then 21, 22, something like that, would be 10 days later. Is that what?
When's our regular meeting?
Our regular meeting is the?
The 15th.
15th.
Yeah, we can have our first public hearing then, and then 10 days later, we can do the special meeting with the head of the department.
Okay, that'd be, that's my whole calendar on the charger out there, and I cannot read those little numbers.
But that, that works for me, and I'll, I'll meet with you sometime the first week, Father.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, that's all I have.
All you have?
Yeah.
Not one more thing? Barrett? You got it. What was it, was it Barrett, you just had one more thing? One of them there?
Oh, yeah, no, he's got it all mixed.
Okay. Mr. Park?
Yes. So, everybody knows about the truck, Tim come in at the last workshop, saying motor was having a problem. The truck is not having a problem. And I told him, you know, I told Martin, Terry, that he felt uncomfortable about the truck. Just take a little nickel and let him take a look at it.
That's fine with everybody? If you fixed, if you fixed the problem, that's good.
I fixed it.
Just keep driving. Okay? Have you heard Tim say anything about that?
He's in class this week, so he won't be here till. If I got out of lockdown and today all the time, and probably, you'll finish up tomorrow, probably you'll have to go Monday and finish show, but we'll do that.
Anything else?
That's all we got.
Thank you for checking with us, and as Tim comes back to his work, you'll kind of stay in touch with him and see if he follows through or something like that. That'd be great. If you don't mind, if you don't mind to do that.
I do.
Mr. Walker, Sam, you think? Mr. Carter's absent. Ms. West, anything?
Not to know.
Okay. Real quickly, Paul, you were going to do something with us, for us, about a speaker and things like that?
We're working on that right now.
You're working on that, okay? Okay, nothing to report out there. Development Club, Bewithin, nothing they hadn't asked you about, where to put it or anything like that?
Yeah. Yeah, you know, they mentioned putting it on the west side, you know, right next to the word, you mentioned that one time. But I think they sort of don't want it there, so it's, I don't know where exactly they want it, but it should be our, the term. it, but it should be our determination for they put it where we talking to.
Right, sure.
We start watching for those septic dates up there.
Yeah. So, if there's a better place now, I don't know.
Yeah. It was all right for them to suggest that, but I really knew that we need to put it because we're going to have to, space to fill up down there after a while, if you go to that hollage porch, nobody will...
That would be an ideal place to me now, I mean, but that's just me, I mean, it wouldn't matter to me, I mean, Paul.
Okay, and immediately after our last meeting, did everybody get the ethical training notice?
Not.
Yeah, on October the seventh, from Jeff Carter, yeah. October seventh or ninth, one, I'll make sure, I text you, I text you, I think, but I'll make sure you know when it's in Marianas on a Friday. Fuquay and Davis is going to hold it, and I think it's going to be the accident or anything?
I don't know if he said Fuquay, but Fuquay and Davis?
And it'll be eight to twelve.
Who is the candidate?
Eight to twelve.
And they'll provide breakfast for us.
And Miss, Miss Kessin too?
Miss Kessin. That way we can get all that on that, and then I think the Legacy may offer, but this is free, they're providing it free, so that's a good time for us all going to get it, you know, and if you can't go then, we'll find one online for you.
Yeah. It is so much...
Better to go. To me, it'd be better.
Better in person.
It's so much better that online, you can't, you can't sometimes ask the question the way that the last two online, since we've had, I didn't like theirs. Okay. Anybody in the audits have anything for the city council tonight?
We are working on dogs out of Florida, for Mr. and Ms. Rich, they're having a talk with some dogs out there, but we're, we're working on it.
Okay.
We know who the dogs are, we just got to get them.
They get rough.
And before we adjourn, we may need, we had questions last weekend, the workshop, we may need to bring those up about our water, our water collections, they are, they're extremely bad again, and...
But I'm trying to get back into the swing of doing water, I haven't done it in six months, but, yes, and I am working on those. We have four of our residents that are going through the DEO for the live-out monies that are coming available for them. Those will, those I know their income base and all that, they'll be, the rest of them are working on. Now, I hope to have a better report, so I am sending out letters to everybody that's the length of, giving them so many days to bring their account up, or, and y'all know, y'all, and I hope y'all hired somebody that's collecting for us, we sure need one, but I am not, but I will do what I need to do to, I will put some locks on it.
I think we stressed to both candidates last week, both helped us that, that this had to be done.
Yes.
Oh, and, and this one, did I think is a corporate account from across straight out here?
They paid up.
Didn't it?
Yeah.